All right, good evening everybody and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, May 13th, from call to being to order, and start with Roll Call on the last.
Frank Mills.
Art Houseman.
Jim Gangney.
Ryan Brakes.
Sherri Pollard.
All right, we do have a quorum and all full members are present, so no alternates will be appointed this evening. We're starting with public hearings, Item A 25-2 SP of Strategic Commercial Realty requesting special permit for earth excavation and removal on property located at 64 Black Hill Road, Assessors map seven, block 78, lot 19, RA 60 zoning district. And we have speaking to the applicant.
For the record, John Pralis and I were all the same. I was president for last week, we made presentation to the commission at that time. We went through the plans in detail, the operations themselves, in our approach to the development of this property, and there were a couple of lingering items that were left for this meeting, the primary being the action by the Ensign Wetlands Commission. The Ensign Wetlands Commission held their meeting on April 15th and approved the project as it has been presented to this board, and you should have a copy of that approval notice in your file if you don't have it here. There were some questions that were raised during the last meeting that we will address as well, but there are a couple of items in terms of housekeeping I'd like to add or at least one. We did not discuss it at the last meeting, although it is part of your record, there is a site restoration bond and erosion control bond that's been submitted with the application in the amount of 147,000, and again, there's a copy here, but you should have that. So one of the more openly discussed topics was surrounding traffic, and we discussed at the last meeting that the application has been submitted to the D O T, they have reviewed and approved the plan set that's in front of you, and you have a letter to that effect in the file. In further support of that, we contacted Hesketh and Associates and asked Scott Hesketh, traffic engineer, to review the plans and the D O T approval. I have a couple of copies of his report I will submit, and then I will give you the So Hesketh and Associates reviewed the plans, the D O T approval, the traffic counts in the area, the level of service on the roadway, and performed an analysis of that traffic, and that is included in the document that I just provided to you. The first two pages are his cover letter, and I will read from the summary. Based on a relatively low volume of site-generated traffic, as my professional opinion that the local roadway network will not be significantly impacted by the traffic associated with this product excavation operations on the proposed site, you can add the D O T District Two office has prepared to issue a portion of permit for the proposed driveway. And it goes on with several pages of calculations for his traffic analysis. I am not profess to be a traffic engineer, but we did seek some additional professional opinion to support the D O T's approval that's already been granted, so you have that in your file. Also, someone raised a question in regard to traffic and the work that the trucks do on the pavement, and it didn't occur to me until afterwards, but, and I don't know how commonly known it is, but those trucks actually pay highway use fee in addition to their property taxes, in addition to their registrations and insurance, and those fees are per mile based on reports that are required by the Department of Revenue Services on a monthly basis. So they do pay for use of those roads in addition to what the rest of us pay for registrations and taxes and things like that. Those fees range from anywhere from three cents to 18 cents a mile traveled, depending on the way to the vehicle. So they still wanted to just to note that as well. We also had some discussions about wildlife and species, and the commission chair requested that staff do some looking into bald eagle notifications of nests and things of that nature. Ryan didn't do that, we also looked into that, and we basically came to the same conclusion, that if a nest is encountered, D E P is to be notified, it can't be harmed or destroyed, and D E P would be notified for inspection of the site at that time to determine the best way to mitigate that concern. So, we did look into it, there isn't a, essentially a documented policy on it, there are just some directions and the notification requirement. So, we do concur that that is the path that we would take if in fact a bald eagle nest was encountered. I also wanted to point out in that regard, our excavation limit is approximately 300 feet from the river at its closest point, and our property consists of approximately 4,000 feet of frontage along the Gooch River. Of that 4,000 feet, we're only going to be impacting about 20% of it within that 300-foot section. Our excavation area is about 700 feet linearly along the river's edge, and it's in that northeast corner of the excavation, where we hit the closest point, right in this area, where we're about 300 feet from the river. The rest of the property and the rest of our work is well outside of that distance. With that said, I believe we've managed or addressed the items that were raised at the last meeting. Again, it was primarily the Wetlands decision, and I don't want to make any questions to the commission at this point.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Hand the phone, just state your name and what your question is.
People Lloyd, I'm Cameron Rodd. Now apparently you guys are going to be digging behind my garage. I have a handout, well, and I'm concerned about what it's going to do for that, because 47 years I've lived there, I've never had a problem like that.
So, Mr. Lloyd's property on the map that I'm looking at, Fermi Sheet 5, is all the way at the northern end of Cameron Drive? It's here, it is a significant distance from any excavation. Our excavation terminates in this corner, you're back here, so we're not excavating anything next to you, behind your garage, or to the rear of your property. But our excavation terminates in the vicinity of 36 Cameron Drive?
Right.
Or what about when you're over here?
The water table's a water table, so...
We have installed groundwater monitoring wells throughout the site, and we are staying in excavation area B, I believe I stated at the last hearing. The bottom of our excavation is at minimum five feet above the water table, so we're not getting in the water table in that area at all.
What's the maximum depth of digging?
20 feet.
20 feet, and that's in the front end of the property, not the back end?
That is in this, that's back in this bottom corner, in the vicinity of Testa Number Nine.
Okay, but it's still going 20 feet deep, you're still five feet above the water table?
That's correct, and that's based on groundwater monitoring wells, that one's sold by Farmers Wolf and Associates, the groundwater logs or the monitoring well logs are included on the plan set.
And what's the distance, so buffer zone required is 100 feet, are you exceeding 100 feet in any of the areas?
The closest point of excavation, I'm just going to flip sheets here so I can scale this. Yeah, we're approximately 200 feet from Lloyd's property corner, with the end of our excavation.
And the well monitoring is continuous, so as the water table changes, then the excavation depths would change with the water table?
Right, within the wells that are outside the excavation area, the wells that are within the excavation area, it's going to be excavated around that at some point.
So, are you going to do anything about keeping the sand down?
The dust control on the site is supposed to be managed by a water truck, as is almost every gravel site at this point.
And you have to get it on the other side of me, which way it comes?
Mr. Lloyd, if you could address your comments to the commission, and then we'll address your questions to the applicant.
Because where they dug on the other side of me, like if you go down Cameron Drive, I'm on the end, and up this way, you can see all the sand, and it just falls all over my vehicles, you can't even have a cookout with that, and some sand.
Yeah, so what would have to happen, so this is limited, the public hearing to this application, if you have a complaint about another site, then what you have to do is call the zoning office at 860-230-3030. Let them know, because if it's a dusty day, for example, you can contact them and make sure that they're implementing their dust mitigation. So when you call, zoning will go out, inspect, and make sure that they're putting their dust mitigation out.
What they're going to be doing now?
Excuse me?
Of what they're going to be doing now?
So that's with all sites, so for example, with U-Line site, when there's dust, I live on that road, I call zoning, I say, "Hey, are they implementing dust mitigation?" They inspect the site, they make sure they are. So that goes for all sites, so any gravel operation, any building that's happening, if there's a dust issue, you call the zoning office, and then they ensure that they're doing their dust mitigation.
So how long is this going to go on for?
Sure, so at the last meeting, the applicant indicated it was a two-and-a-half-year plan, there's two phases, one would be six months and one would be two years. So, Mr. Pralis, on the map, could you just indicate what part is the Phase One, six month, and which one is the Phase Two, two years?
Sure, excavation area A, which is down in the southwest portion of the site, closest to the Cameron Drive properties, that's a six-month excavation process. Excavation area B, which is the more northern part of the site, would be the area that would identify for two years.
And does that also include the reclamation?
Yes, that's a small, there's only 25,000 cubic yards coming out of excavation area A, that can be done timely.
So the entire project, including reclamation, will be done within that two-and-a-half-year period, it may take a few months.
Correct.
And then there's nothing going to come up about that area again? You know, nothing's going to be like, okay, now we're going to do this, and that type of thing?
So we can never prevent an applicant from coming back with another application for another project, we can only look at what's before us now and what's allowed in the zone. So this is an RA 60 zone, so under the RA 60 zone, they are allowed to apply for a gravel exhumation permit. There's no zone change request on this property at this time. The special permit is for a five-year period, we do have the ability to require an administrative review, so we can do that at the two-and-a-half mark to make sure that they're meeting their goals on the timeframe.
And if something should happen, they get oil spill, whatever, and I get my well gets contaminated, what happens then?
Do you want to talk about any bonds you have on the property?
Well, the E N S bond that the town is going to hold is $147,000, and that's for erosion control measures, that's for any of those types of things that are there. The plan set includes directions in terms of anything that would occur, in terms of any kind of spills at any time, that has to be reported to D E P, and at that point, D E P would step in. But it's also a definite problem with the website, that there's no maintenance of vehicles or anything like that allowed on the site either. The only service work would be filling the fuel on the vehicle, and there are concrete hacks specified in two locations where the fuelings that is required to occur. So, there's no maintenance on site, there's no spill. If there were, it would be a home hydraulic line or something like that, there's an notification requirement to D E P, that's included in the plan set, which is included in the application here with the town, and that's enforceable not only by D E P, but also by the town.
And what's the time they're going to be starting every morning? Because I know the other spot just behind me, off the side of me, they start 6:30, they start warming up the vehicles?
Sure, the requested hours for operation are Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 to 12:00, no Sundays, and no major holidays.
Okay, and they don't stick to that 7 o'clock?
So once again, if they violate the terms of their application, you have to make the phone call to the zoning office to file the complaint, so that they can go to the applicant with the violation.
Oh, yeah, they don't speak to you?
Yep.
All right.
All right. You have a question, John?
Can you determine which way the groundwater is flowing on the site?
Yes, we did, there's a groundwater profile. Sheet three of the plan set? If you look at excavation area A on that plan set, you'll see some colored contours, those colored contours are the groundwater contours, so it is dropping into gray to the west. The dark, the black dashed lines are surface contours in the color of the groundwater contour.
Okay, so it's basically headed on the...
It's heading to the southwest, more to the west.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
My name is Heather Brison, I live in Palmerore in the central village, I'm just curious about the restoration plan of this project. After you're all done, what's going to actually, we're going to do another project.
Yep, can you describe the pond and the other reclamation?
Sure, we did discuss it at the last meeting as well, there'll be a pond that's constructed on excavation area A, that will be treated with three-to-one slopes, which will be moment conceded. The rest of the disturbed areas will also be restored in terms of moment seed. We specified an 18-inch soil profile, which is 12 inches of subsoil with additional 16 inch topsoil on top of it, so it can be used. Future uses of the property could be the residential R60 use that's allowed here, it could be extended agricultural uses, the whole back part of the property is agricultural filled now. So there could be an extension of the agricultural use that exists, Harland.
Is there anything in place saying that any kind of trees they take down that they're about to replace, or is this just they go in, you gravel out, and they're free to do whatever they want?
How much of the property is currently forested versus the fields?
I would say probably 40% of it is fields, and that's just off the top. The whole property is 134 acres, our excavation area is only 11 acres, so our excavation is less than 10% of the forest on the area.
Right, so you're not planning on replanting the trees, it's going to be left as open field?
It'll be left as pond and open field, that's correct. But open field with a soil profile that'll support vegetation.
Also, I wanted to suggest that there be a survey of the amount of vehicles that go through this location, to see the overall impact of having more vehicles go through, see if it's actually a significant amount, if that's possible.
So that was part of the traffic study that was submitted this evening?
With that?
Which, you can get a copy from staff, right Ryan? So if anyone in the public wants a copy of that traffic study, they can get that from the zoning office.
And I wanted to make comment on the bond, you said that if anything goes wrong, 147,000?
147, sorry, kind of bounced on the chair here, but 147,000 is the bond that's required by the applicant, supposed to be there. And the purpose of the bond is to make sure that all the original certification controls are put in place, meaning the site defenses and all of those things. It's also there in the event that if something were to happen, and property got cleared and was left, the town has 147,000 to reestablish or restore the site to the standards in the plan in terms of the topsoil and subsoil, and actually clean it up. So, that money is, that bond is calculated based on the volume of material that needs to be spread, the machine time to do it, seeding, stabilization, so the monies are set aside as effective measure, if the applicant were to fail, the town has the resources to restore the site.
And just a question, Ryan, when those, that amount is submitted by the applicant, staff is reviewing it to ensure that they feel it's sufficient to cover the needs, so is that signed off on by the engineer or by you?
No, I take care of it, it's pretty standard, or something of this size.
I'm just curious if 147 is really, would cover, would it cover, how many people are actually next to this property, how much will it cost for a well to be fixed, if these people's wells get messed up? Because I had to re-dig a new well, and I got reported up to 20,000, and I can't imagine how many other people have wells over here, I don't see how 147,000 could cover.
The 147 is mostly for restoration of the site, it does not cover impact wells, but there should not be any impact to the wells, they're nowhere near the property lines or the wells. We can't...
Can't be done, can you?
Well done. So they're keeping the digging above the water table, so the water table should not be disturbed, there's no blasting on the site?
There's no blasting.
So all the excavation is being done by machines, not blasting?
Correct. Interesting, I'm sorry, but it's being excavated and taken off-site, and that's it.
So it's being picked, loaded, and moved out?
Correct, there's no processing, there's no washing, screening, none of that's permanent on the site. And just to elaborate, that 147,000 is, as the plan stated, to protect the site for E N S controls until restoration. That's calculated based on a standard mean schedule, and it's prepared by a professional engineer, submitted to the town in due by the time it's completed as well, so it's not just our.
No, I understand, it just doesn't seem sufficient for, you know, things to go wrong.
I did just want to clarify one thing though.
Yeah?
Excavation area A, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we will be below the water table.
All right. So, in previous meetings you mentioned you were going to remove trees next to our property, because you're going to weaken the trees, they're all pine, shallow rooted areas, and that's going to make a five-acre pond, it's going to allow a lot of winds to go across that pond, and they're on our property line, so I want to know who's determining what tree they're removed, and what's the buffer going on that, that's the first question.
You want to go take these one at a time?
Yeah, you can take them one at a time.
What I said at the last meeting was you have an arborist look at the trees to determine which ones could be a threat. The trees that are within that influence area that could be a threat, the applicant has agreed to remove based on inspection by an arborist. The trees that are, that we're referring to, can be expressed as at the last meeting, those are within the 100-foot required offer, that is the zoning regulations for excavations. So, technically, we shouldn't be going into that buffer at all, but we understand the concern, and the applicant has agreed to remove trees that are threatened or appear to be threatened based on an arborist inspection.
Well, as mentioned before, there's no winds in the bottom 20 feet of them, so the top eddy and the pines are all shallow rooted, next to the swamp on the buffer zone between the road, and then you have, not the swamp, correctly, and as you said, I think it would be 50 feet from there to where you start in the pond?
The excavation area is 50 feet in parallel essentially to the Wetlands that runs to the northeast and southwest along, and parallel to Black Hill Road, our excavation area is approximately 50 feet from that. There is a resultant burn that will exist, so we'll have Wetlands elevation, there'll be a burn, and then it drops back down into the pond.
There's several trees along this whole area that fell at any time, and in here, this 100 feet, our house, one of them is right, within five feet of your zone, so all the trees are literally five feet from our, one of our apartments, two of our apartments, five feet. And our well is literally 20 feet off that line where you said you're going to be digging all over the water table, our well is 25 feet from that, so clearly 125 feet from where you're digging.
Is well outside of the area of influence for what we're proposing, and I understand your concern about the trees, some of your improvements are way up against the property line, that don't, that don't, and they are legally nonperforming, I'm sure at this point, but they don't need any required setbacks, I've remaining the setback that we're requiring to make for the excavation. In addition to that, we are willing to remove the trees that are threatened or threatening based on inspection by arborists. I'm not a licensed arborist, and I presume that you are not either, but when a professional tells us which trees need to be removed, those are the ones I'll remove down.
When will that happen? Hold on, if you have a question, you got to say it to the microphone, and we'll take it orderly, he still has the mic.
All right, and then is there going to be any noise control created, I mean, sound control created for the noise, because the motorcycle tracks are noisy, and once you remove all these trees, you're going to make the five-acre pond, that's going to echo across that room.
Are you taking?
I'm...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the Central Cycle Club's property is to the northeast, on the other side of the road here. We are excavating the area that's shaded in the camp. There's a 300-foot buffer that's going to remain between our excavation and the river, which is also a 300-foot buffer to the cycle club, and then you also still have a hill in this area that is going to remain forested, and so, yes, will there be cleaning in there? Absolutely, but the sound mitigation is going to occur in that 300-foot buffer along the river, which is, you know, again, several thousand feet from your property.
All right, and it's all going to be loud, and all that can is going to be removed? That's all trees that are now, you know, helping the sound, and now that's not going to be there. Will the ponds be doing that? All right, so what's the answer, no, nothing on our end over here?
We're not going to do any additional sound mitigation, you also have the requirements of the zoning regulations met, in terms of the 100-foot buffer to the excavation, that's a requirement that's been established by the commission, and very recently visited the zoning regulations, and we made every effort to meet the requirements laid out in the town's zoning regulations with this application, that 100-foot buffer being one of them.
How often will this job take be inspected unannounced, where you guys who are there go there?
Ryan, what's the inspection schedule for ongoing projects?
Katie and Shaw try to get out once a week.
They know the date every time you come?
No.
And then if there are any complaints about the site, you can contact the zoning office, and they can go out and inspect whatever the complaint may be at the time.
Phone number please.
860-230-3030, one of the easiest numbers to remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And there was another question from the audience?
Julie Moholsky, 810 Cameron Drive, so, what happens if the tree falls on our apartment building because of this? Because if you have an arborist, if he has an arborist come, how do I know he's not lining a pocket or something, and they just say what he wants? It happens, I believe me, I work for the state, I can tell you it happens. And he can pay them off, and they can say whatever he wants, what about me? Should I get an arborist, should I get a lawyer, and have them all talk?
So the trees are on the applicant's property?
Correct.
They're required to keep a buffer under our regulation, that buffer's a minimum 100-foot buffer?
Right.
If a tree should fall, it will fall under regular Connecticut state law as to responsibility of the tree, so it would not be a zoning issue at that point.
So, potentially, you know...
We only have so much scope and authority.
Yeah, because the trees are probably over 100 feet, I'm guessing, and like I said, we had an arborist come, and they said, "You take down, you can't just take down a few trees, you've got to take down that whole mass." About, like, as tall as the trees are, it's far away, so, you know, it's a hundred, it's just been close to me. Pretty...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the public?
Yep.
You've got to say it loud in crowd, so the public can hear your question.
Go ahead, go ahead and do the asking, why?
So, back to the trees, I know there's zoning, but what about back to the pond? That's going to be five acres of clear land where wind can clearly go through there, the trees are standing there now because there's a lot of trees, as our arborist said. When certain trees are well moved, they're a lot weaker, because they don't have any green in the whole bottom 25 feet, and they're shallow rooted trees, they're not old, they're pines. That's all. So it's something to think about, and if you do care about the town, here's your chance to do something. I know you say that about all projects here, well, here's your chance, instead of making a full gravel pit out in here.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
Yep.
Sure. Is there a pond currently on the property that's being expanded, Mr. Pralis?
No, there's not.
Okay, so the depth of excavation, because it's going into the water table?
That's correct.
So why does the applicant need to go below the water table in that area?
We're proposing the pond for the aggregate product that is there. Listen, at the end of the day, does anybody really like rappel pits? Probably not, but at the end of the day, everybody wants their roads paved, they want concrete for their foundations, they want gravel for their driveways, and it has to come from somewhere, and the regulations are in place to allow... And the regulations are in place to allow for this type of activity. We have proposed the project consistent with your regulations. It has received approval from the weapons commission, it has received approval from the Connecticut DOT, and we have adhered to the regulations as they've been recently revised. So the idea that we're going in to excavate earth products, that's what our client's business is and that's what we do. Unfortunately, this part of Connecticut is rich in gravel. You have it, Canterbury has it, Bridle has it to a lesser extent, but that's what the material is. We don't get to pick and choose where it is. But unfortunately, it has to come from somewhere. This site is zoned appropriately for it. We can meet the regulations that are required to be met and this is what we're proposing.
Any other comments from the public?
Art Gagney, 10 Jackson Road. I was going to ask you about the trucking, but obviously you've got to think from the state. You might want to look on there if it indicates anything about speeds in that area, that there's a passing zone there. And I would imagine the average speed's probably 60 or so. So that might be an issue with trucks pulling out on that corner. I have a question about, about that, the trucks. They say that it's going to be 50 a day, going, coming. They're going to go to 136 Black Hill Road. What's going to happen after there? Is that a processing plant now, 136? Is that the reason they're going there?
So this application is not having any processing, so the product is being removed from this site and moved to their neighboring site where the processing will occur.
Right.
So that's currently a processing site, current?
I didn't know that.
Yep.
Yes, okay. I've talked to people on Oak Drive from the past where there's an excavation site right there, sand in the pools, windows closed all the time. I talked to my neighbor who was just northeast of 136 Black Hill, same thing. And this year, I have the same thing in my pool cover, sand, and it must be from that process of plant. So my thought is that, first, I feel bad. I feel bad not only for myself, but the people on Oak Drive, I've seen it, for my neighbor, for the people on Topa Road, north and south, they're northeast of a gravel operation. The one that's just proposed at ONG across from the veterinarian that's going to hit La Perro in Route 12, that's northeast of gravel operation. Anybody northeast of gravel operation like this one that we're talking about is going to hit our fire department in Central Village, is going to hit Fillmore Drive. I, you know, 100 foot buffer is okay generally, but when the neighborhood is to the northeast of the plant, we're going to get this. And so, you know, I'm concerned, we're supposed to be making a better quality of life for our residents, not worse. So this is just one more that's going to affect Fillmore Drive in that area. Because I don't care, dust, dust control is probably used just on the roads that come in and out, I'm sure. They're not going to dust, I mean, wet down what they're digging and putting in the trucks they go. And that's what flies, so. So on this area, I'm concerned about all the rubber tires everywhere too, because they've broken down over the years, I'm sure. So now when you start, and even if you take them out, there's going to be particles of rubber that are going to come up into the air, but not Fillmore Drive.
And I'll just touch on that moment. So there was a note from staff that all unregistered, inoperable motor vehicles, vehicle parts, campers, registered or otherwise, mobile homes, tires, and miscellaneous bulky items must be removed from the property with the property inspected by the zoning officer or town planner prior to being issued a zoning permit to commence operations. So that concerns...
They won't see those particles that are embedded in that soil that's going to be
But they are cleaning up the bulky waste.
Yeah, well, you know, the hopes are. And then lastly, about the five acre pond, and I want to remind you, they asked about the large pond that was to be built at Zero Norbitch Road last time they came for a renewal. And I was told it wasn't suitable to be used, the materials weren't suitable. So could this happen here? And then we could not just lose the pond, but lose 45, 100 square feet of wetlands for the road coming in, the access road.
What is the maintenance plan on the pond?
Thank you.
The maintenance plan?
Yeah. Are they doing any kind of...
Once the pond is dug in, the site will just be...
It's stopped.
That's it. It gets up along.
So just once constructed, whatever nature does with the pond, that's what nature does with the pond?
That's correct. And that's consistent with several other operations in pond that the applicant prepared in the locations.
Any other comments from the public on this application? Any other comments or questions from the board? Any other items from staff? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June.
Second.
Second by Frank, close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, 25-6 SP of DeWitt Barlow requesting special permit for a 24 by 42 detached garage with a 13 by 15 greenhouse at one end and bonus area above garage. Property located at 470 Plainfield Pike, assessors map 32, block 58, Lot 5, RA60 zoning district. Is the applicant here this evening?
No, I'm just here to answer questions. They're not, they're not in town right now, but...
Okay. So we do have somebody representing the applicant. So as noted, it was a 24 by 42 detached garage, 13 by 15 greenhouse, and a bonus area above the garage. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public with a comment or question on this application? Any comments or questions from board members? Any outstanding questions from staff?
No, I'll just briefly go over it. If you look in your packet, right in the honey, the staff report, you can see...
Excuse me. Members of the public, we have a meeting that we are having. There are microphones and cameras, so we just want to make sure that the meeting information is picked up, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Right in the middle of your staff report is an aerial photo. You can see that the location of the garage is probably a good 1,000 feet away from the property lines. This is the former Boy Scout camp. This is the garage we located near the house. The next couple of pages show the location of the garage, which is highlighted, and also what the garage will look like. It is a, I guess, a cake looking style garage on the second floor. And there will be bonus area above, and it's a three car garage.
Any other questions from the public? Or questions from board members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Close.
Motion to close public hearing by Bart, a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item C, 25-2 TA of Outfront Billboard requesting a text amendment to section 13.5 of the regulations to add section 13.56.6 to allow for billboards along I-395. We are speaking for the applicant.
Do you want to speak into the microphone?
Yes, please. Unless you're loud, like me.
Not that loud. Good evening.
Not many people are.
I'll try to project. Good evening, my name is Brian Maroser. I'm the real estate manager for Outfront. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak and to introduce this text amendment to the zoning code that regulates off premise advertising. One, this amendment allows, excuse me, this amendment allows for a special permit application to modernize signage on the interstate only with LED technology. This may provide a revenue opportunity to a town-owned industrial bus depot along I-395. Two, it maintains the same number of billboards at town by requiring existing billboards to be removed. It allows a billboard to be moved to a more commercially appropriate site. The number of possible sites interstate only are very limited due to zoning and space requirements. Three, it requires a special permit applicant to provide the town with free digital advertising during the entirety of the billboard's operation. A digital billboard installed under this ordinance will have a greater social utility for the town and its residents than the billboards that are required to be removed. So to recap, it allows for digital signs, it maintains the same number of billboards, so no new billboards, and it provides a free digital advertising for town initiatives. Thank you, and I'm available tonight for questions about this text amendment or digital off premise advertising.
As a public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question about this application, this is your opportunity.
I just don't, I don't understand why we need a 50 foot billboard that lights up and not even just going to disrupt, disrupt the wildlife. It doesn't make much sense. And this, this for that, the town gets something, is there?
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience about this application? And if you want to form a line, you don't have to wait till the next one speaks, you can feel free to line up.
My name's Earl Brad from Black Hill. The question is, how come the billboard keeps coming up and it keeps being pulled down? They get up and turn around, it seems to be before you. And I don't know if you've ever traveled 95 going south and you've seen the billboards that look like eyesore? Who's going to maintain them? Going to have to pay for the upkeep? Hopefully not the town. But again, you know, I don't know how many of you have traveled from here to South Carolina? I can count at least 200 billboards that look like they should be tore down and they're just standing there. So I'm a guess at myself.
Thank you.
Hi, I hate talking, but I'm from California.
Will you please have your name?
Yeah, just your name.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Dean Evans. I'm home in Florida. I'm from California, place with the biggest and nastiest signage in the world and advertising ever. I moved to Connecticut because specifically this part of Connecticut for some of the best sky gazing I've ever seen in my life. And seeing things like this and knowing how it impacts the environment where you sleep, the animals. I've never seen skies so dark in my life, you know, at night in California, surprise of orange. And to see something like this coming to such a big place, it's a step backwards from the identity I'm feeling. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else from the public have a comment or question on this application?
Kevin Cunningham, 405 Mississauga Road, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I'm asking the planning and zoning members to consider the voting in favor of this text amendment change being presented tonight. I believe that it's a more fair way to offer a compromise to utilize the trade off by taking out billboards along Route 12 and making these of rural character, of billboards to be out, taken out of that area so you can actually have that rural character. And also understanding that we're looking to accentuate that area, also allowing us to modernize along Community 5 and better upgrade for that use. And I could be wrong, but I'll ask the question, if this was approved tonight, would we still have to have a company who wants to put something up, put an application, and therefore come in front of your board for approval or denial?
Under the text, it is a special permit use, so then an applicant would have to come forward to apply for a billboard.
I also heard what other people were talking about with other states and other places. This is playing field. I think what we're offering here is an opportunity to take to a trade off, to keep the number of billboards as is, but to be able to bring forth rural character by taking down those two billboards along Route 12 and to be able to utilize the space that we have up in our, some of the high department. But that's where the application would come from. So again, I ask that you would please consider this and vote in favor. Thank you.
Ryan, just a clarification point. So in order for an applicant to apply for the special permit, they would have to own billboards on Route 12 that they would then be required to remove?
Or contract with an existing company that has billboards in town.
So then they would have to document that they have that ability to do that?
Yes, as part of the application process, they would present which billboards will be removed in order to fulfill.
Now, the text that talks about the town advertising, it appears that could be outside the scope of planning and zoning because we cannot control the content of a billboard. So wouldn't that have to be part of a lease agreement with the town and not part of the zoning regulations?
It's written into the zoning regulations, it's something that the applicant is offering. So I don't think it's an issue.
But under Connecticut general statutes, we can't control content, so we can't require that an applicant advertise town in our zoning regulations. It's outside our scope.
Well, we're not requiring the content. They'll let her agree with the board of selection. So we're not saying you have to have this content on your sign. We're simply saying you have to provide advertising for the town, it'll be between the town and the applicant to decide what's going to happen.
Questions from board members on this application? Or the public? It's still public hearing.
Art Gagney, Jackson Road. I'm highly in favor of this proposal. I was in favor of it, I know they're all along. With everyone wanting to move into the 21st century in communications, I don't know why this has been so hard. I've read the arguments and I don't think they hold weight. I drove the highway in that location a couple of weeks ago. You've got power lines all down the east side of the highway. You have an old sign advertising the industrial park, which is built already. Route 12 hole a little further down. There's nothing scenic about it. As far as light, they look like any other billboard. And billboards that have lights pointed skyward towards them as it is, which we don't really allow. So this would be a plus to that. I'm really excited that they want to take two down on our scene in Route 12. And I know the commission doesn't take money into consideration, but I can as a resident. With an offer from Outfront to run our town events on the board for free and the revenue from renting the space, I would say this is a win all around. That's all. Thank you.
I just have some questions about if there's an assessment of how this would affect the town's like whole, you know, if you take a cruise and, you know, just as I said, I have like minor short in my house in our neighborhood, a little bit. I wonder how that's going to change your structure.
Could you address how the billboards are powered?
Sure. There's a lot of questions about the power usage of digital billboards for the, I'll answer for the protectments that we use. And they draw 9.1 kilowatts, which is way less. Billboards, digital billboards are not our core indicators and a long time, there are fans on other side of the campus. Today, they're cool LEDs, they don't have an improvement system, they're on 9.1 kilowatts. Also used about as much power as can appear as one and a half houses. I hope that addresses some of the questions. I also heard a couple other questions about modernizing upkeep, night sky, town events, so I'm available to answer a question.
Go ahead. Do you want to explain how that's maintained, how the billboards are maintained?
Okay, sure. Well, I can always speak for the billboards that my company operates in Connecticut. We've got 59 of the over 150 digital billboards in Connecticut. We maintain them, we operate them the first five years. We only have to visit the sites probably twice. When we, when we think about or look at static billboards, we think about the lights, the catwalks, the eye beams. The modern visual billboards that would be built under a special application for this ordinance are clean, no catwalks, no uplights, no clutter in that sense. When we talk about pop glow in that sky specifically, billboards that will be removed under this ordinance... ordinance, under a special permit application under this ordinance, have big lights that are pointed up to retract light off of the vinyl surface of the advertising. Those go up. The ones, you know, when we talk about in this portal in the northeast, the op tech product has these louvers above every single pixel in the whole digital face. That prevents it from growing up, has a focus light coming out, so it removes the ones that might have that concern and replaces it with a product that is modernized or cluttered in that sense and blocks the uplight. As far as the town events, there's a question about other towns, there's lots of towns in Connecticut that have some version of this in the ordinance. When they went to modernize the ordinance, they allowed the digital signage. Some examples of how this works is an operating agreement, you know, as a part of a special permit application, to be entered into between the town and the applicant to provide for this mandated digital signage. Some of the cool projects, and this is a cool part of my job and commitment that we do every week, libraries, summer reading programs, Fourth of July, town parks and recs, fundraisers, animal wellness stuff. There's a lot of different examples of a lot of different interests of independent communities in Connecticut. I've got a small team that works on this every week, and it's a lot of fun to work with, and I think it's really worth it.
Question?
Thank you.
How many lumens does it put out versus, like, the conventional?
So, how many lumens? We're talking about.
Oh.
Okay, there's two ways, various, there's, good question. There's parts of this ordinance that are near, you know, what some of the state ordinance is, the state regulations are. And there's mits, which is just the brightness, the raw emotion of the sun. And then there's, right there, foot candles, which is the measure of any reflect. So, on the board's, the state is geared towards foot candles. There's automated dimming technology, which is like a cell phone. I'm reading my computer app at night, it dims way down, the usage way less. The figures about power usage that I gave you earlier are throughout the year, I mean, that takes into account nighttime and also Fourth of July. So, the requirement is automated technology. The one who uses these now is possible to be, it's not. So, I think this says 7,500 mits as the regulation, I think it's 0.05 foot candles. They're going to be like more regulation.
Okay, but I asked.
Sorry, if you could just speak up and say your question to the board so we can hear you, so we can make sure.
I just asked about the difference.
From a conventional billboard versus a digital one?
I don't have that information for a conventional billboard. I know that the conventional billboard is much brighter. It's not illuminated during the day. You make them any even light, and it just comes out of the way, reflects off, sorry. It reflects off of the vinyl surface, you know, towards traffic, just goes everywhere. It's not a focused way. I don't have the information on what that is or what.
Any other comments or questions from the public on this application? Any comments or questions from board members?
We had pictures last time of what they looked like, what the billboard looked like on the Monday. Do you?
You're talking about the ours?
The previous application?
Yeah, we have. Didn't you have a picture? Do you have?
This is the first application without front end application. I think, I do have some, this is, text amendment is about the ability to bring a special type of application. Certainly, I think there would be a requirement for standard application materials, like designs, pictures. I can tell you what I'm thinking of for a project, and that's a 14 by 48, just standard highway boards in size, which is a, all of the places on interstate.
And it was back off the road, right? See it pretty south or?
Or that would be an application specific.
So the, one of the previous applications did have a rendering of what it could possibly look like, so it was not submitted with this application?
Okay, so I can't comment on it, because it actually looked a lot better than the chroming ones that we have on Route 12, with things falling off of them.
And it's safe part for deliberation.
In this application, though, you can't take that into consideration, this is a different petitioner. Well, okay, well, this is a different petitioner.
We're still in the public hearing, part of the process, so deliberation will come after.
All right, I just wanted to ask if there was a photo.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Yes?
If you could just state your name. Aurora Simpson, Mountain Cemetery Road. And these signs you're talking about, it's a digital sign that looks like a big TV screen? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's what you were talking about.
If you walk up too close, they look like a bunch of Christmas lights, but from the highway, it looks like a screen just.
Oh, I've seen them. I've traveled around the world, and I've seen them all over. The only one thing I can say, they're clean, they're clear, they're bright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Anything else from board? And any outstanding from staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion?
Motion by June to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D. 25-7 SP of John Brison IV requesting a special permit for a two-bedroom accessory development unit in a commercial building located at 590-596 North Main Street, assessor's map 4M, block 111B, lot 4, C2 zoning district. Do we have anyone speaking for the applicant this evening? Come on up and just give a basic overview of what you're doing.
Just so the fish knows, you have a foreplan in your bag right here in the staff board.
Hi, I'm John Brison. I own the property at 590-596 North Main. I'm just looking to convert the old GOC pool location to something that actually works with the property. I've driven multiple businesses there that have failed in the past, so rather than have a vacant space in the building, figured I'd utilize it and make an apartment out of it.
And Ryan, you've already reviewed the application to ensure it meets the regulation?
I have.
Okay. And this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question about this application, this is your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members? And any other items from staff? Okay? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion?
One second.
A motion by June to close pub hearing, and a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item E. 25-1 ZC of Stephen St. Germain requesting a zone change of 34.16 acres on Cemetery Road from RA 60 to RA 30, assessor's map 8, block 48, lot 11 and 13, owned by Land Event Realty LLC. Do we have someone who speaks for the applicant? All right. You have the microphone.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Sweetie. I'm a name use attorney and a partner with the law firm of Togan Carberry located in New London, Connecticut. It's a pleasure to be before this board once again. I'm here on behalf of my client, Stephen St. Germain, who has a contract to purchase two parcels of vacant land, accomplishing approximately 34 acres in total, located on the southerly side of Cemetery Road and currently owned by Land Event Realty LLC. Mr. St. Germain has submitted an application to the commission for a zone change to rezone these two parcels from RA 60 to the RA 30 district. Joining me tonight in the audience in the front row is Mr. St. Germain. This is a public hearing tonight, and while our applications are simple and straightforward, I am required to build a record. I'm gonna try to do that as quickly and as efficiently as possible because I know you have a lot of things on your agenda tonight. Tonight, I would remind you that you sit in your legislative capacity in evaluating our application, and you're directed by your state statutes to consider your plan of conservation and development and your comprehensive plan for zoning in your decision-making process. For the record, I would note that all public notice requirements have been met, including notice to nearby property owners and certification of that notice as required by your regulations. I have an additional handout that I'd like to pass out at this time, I'd like it to be entered in and exhibit to the record.
Sure.
from your plan of conservation and development maps. It is your village centers map. You'll see on that map, there is a yellow area that's been highlighted, those are the subject parcels. There is, on the second page, that is an enlargement of that area showing the two parcels involved in the proposed zone change. You can see that those two parcels are located within your Plainfield Village Center as defined in your plan of conservation and development. Page three is a, another version, I know I submitted versions previously, of the actual parcels, it's in your zone map. The red lines indicate the boundaries of the parcels involved in the application. The light sort of beige is the RA 60 district, which the two parcels currently sit in. You can see that there is orange, which is the RA 30, to the north and the northwest of the site. There's industrial across the Providence Whistler Railroad, and you can see to the south is an RA 19 district along Pleasant Street. And the final document I have in my package is an aerial photo with parcel lines added showing the area and showing the land uses around it and some areas that I've called out as development areas on the site. The two subject properties that are part of this application, as I said before, are located southerly of Cemetery Road, and they're currently located within your RA 60 district. These two subject properties are located, are, to the north of the site, excuse me, are the old burial grounds and the new Plainfield Cemetery, which offer the properties and residences across Cemetery Road to the north and which sit in an adjacent RA 30 district along Lovers Lane. To the east of the site is the Providence Whistler Railroad line. To the south, as I said before, is a dense neighborhood of homes along Pleasant Street. Again, it's zone RA 19. And to the west, there is multifamily housing. That includes the Twin Oak Apartments and the Cross Creek Condominiums, as well as Pond View on Cemetery Road. Pond View, as some of you may know, is another multifamily project, is also owned by Mr. St. Germain, and it's immediately west of this site along Cemetery Road. The two subject parcels that are involved in this application, especially the larger western property, if you've been out there, you're familiar with the property, have inland wetlands on them that limit the development in the central portion of that land assembly. That being said, there are areas of both parcels that are quite suitable for development, especially along Cemetery Road immediately adjacent to the Pond View development in the northwestern corner of the assemblage. There's also the possibility of some additional developable land in the southeast corner of the assemblage, access from the end at northern Pleasant Street. Considering that there's public sewer available, both on Cemetery Road and in the Pleasant Street neighborhood, both of these areas are well positioned for residential development and at a higher density. My client tonight seeks to rezone the entirety of these two parcels to the RA 30 district to allow the development potentially of multifamily dwelling units in these developable areas as permitted under your regulations. As you're aware, unlike the RA 60 district, the RA 30 district permits dwellings for more than one family, provided that there's at least 30,000 square feet of lot area per unit, and there are no more than four units in any building. Under the current RA 60 zoning, these two parcels that are part of the application would be limited to the development of only a few single-family dwellings occupying the same developable portion of the parcels. However, if this commission chooses to rezone the properties to RA 30, it opens up the possibility of using these very same areas more effectively for additional units, consistent with higher density zoning and uses that are already immediately adjacent to these parcels. In other words, tonight, rezoning these parcels allows for the more efficient development of this land, concentrating the development in the areas of the site that are suitable for development, and in turn preserving the areas that are armed, which are the wetland areas. As I mentioned before, tonight you sit in your legislative capacity, and our state's zoning statutes direct you to consider your plan of conservation and development and your comprehensive plan for zoning, which, as I'm sure you're aware, is your zoning regulations and your zoning map read together in your decision-making process. Now, from my client's perspective, this is a straightforward zone change that is wholly consistent with your P O C D. As you know, the 2018 P O C D identifies the subject properties as just within the Plainfield Village area, and that's in the handout that I showed you. The P O C D strongly encourages new development and investment into Plainfield's defined village areas because that's where this community has spent the money to build the infrastructure necessary to support that development. The P O C D also identifies the need for new quality housing opportunities in Plainfield and strongly supports the diversification of housing types for all different income levels within the community. With new employers moving into town, seniors looking to downsize, and young people looking for new flexible and affordable housing options, the need for multifamily housing in this community, quite frankly, has never been greater. With the availability of public sewers to this site, a rezoning of the properties to a higher density district, the RA 30, which allows some modest multifamily development makes perfect sense. Rezoning will encourage the highest and best use of the developable portions of these two parcels, and it will lead to new housing units for new residents that will live near the Plainfield Village area and support the local businesses you have in that area of town. The rezoning is also consistent with your comprehensive plan for zoning. The subject properties are already immediately adjacent to the RA 30 district, to the north and the west, and an even more dense RA 19 district to the south. This is not spot zoning, but rather it's the extension of an existing and adjacent RA 30 district into these two properties. In fact, if this, if approved, the rezoning of these properties creates a more natural and expected gradient of zoning from north to south, rather than a lower-density RA 60 zone sandwiched in between two higher-density districts, the RA 30 and the RA 19. Tonight, my client and I would ask you to support our application for a zone change and allow us to pursue a development plan for the property, a plan that we would bring back before you at a later date for review and consideration. I certainly appreciate your attention tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions of the commission. I would also reserve my right to rebut and or respond to any public comments. Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if you have a comment or a question on this application, this is your opportunity.
Jesus Lozak, I live on Flow Street. I probably, I do have a piece of property in time to the month that. I have two sections, one on five, one on zero. I have the apartment complex behind us, which is Twin Oaks or whatever it is. I can see that they developed the over 55 complex down the bottom there, used to be all woods, swamp. Off my property, it's all swamp lands down there. Once you go further down the neighborhood, there's a nice big pond down there. I've been here 18, 19, 20 years, told my dad, and I tried to fish that pond, my children tried to fish that pond, and I've always been told it's a conservation area. I do know Land Event owns those properties back there. I know it's cornfield, it was a great barn at one point. I don't see the presence of developing any of that. One, you ruin the wetlands, that's theory there. Two, for all the people who live in that neighborhood, that's, it's quiet, it's just woods. We don't have to look at more buildings. I wish I never bought my house when I did, and looking at the condos right above my duck window. You know, it's not a pleasant view. I don't think anybody else wants to see that. So, as far as the zoning change, you know, I do, I've lived next to in RA 60, I am RA 19. I did question about my zoning change a few years back, because I had some things going on, and I was pretty much told I'm nobody. So, if I can change what that's a farm land or do what I wanted to do, then why are we gonna take it from farm? going to take it from farm land and develop it with more buildings that are on site? I mean, nobody wants a big building complex right there. But, sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments from public on this application?
Yep.
I'm Steve Broda, and I'd like to make a few comments. I've lived up on the end of Pleasant Street my whole entire life. I'm 70 now.